So, good morning, everybody. I want to welcome you to the March 9th, 2021 Calver County Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Weems to give me invocation, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Dear Lord, as you look over us today, we ask for your guidance, discernment, and wisdom for the 93,000 constituents we serve in this era of COVID-19. We ask for patience, grace, and dignity. We thank you, Lord, for all the good things you have given us. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, before we approve the agenda, just for the viewing audience, I want to let you know that we do have two commissioners online, so it's not just the three of us present today. We have all five in attendance. The next item on the agenda, public service announcements, and we again have with us Dr. Polsky to give us an update.
What about approving the agenda?
Uh, yeah, sorry. Let me approve the agenda first, Doc. Chair, would entertain a motion?
Mr. President, make a motion that we approve the agenda as written.
Second?
Have a motion and a second.
Mr. President?
Yes. Discussion.
Mr. President, I move to amend the agenda to defer the appointments on the Planning Commission. And the rationale for that is there are several commissions and boards that need to be revamped to provide for several things. One more opportunity by bringing into conformance the number of terms that we have. Second, transparency part. And third, to provide that employee does not sit on the board as a voting member. So, Mr. President, I would move that amend.
So, I have a motion to amend. Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President. With regards to the boards, there is a trend for the number of terms to be set at three years, three, four-year terms, and that has a benefit. Not only does it notify the pointee going into the board exactly how many terms they have the ability to serve on, but also it brings and advocates for different thoughts as contemporary times evolve and change. Secondly, with regards to transparency, by limiting terms, that helps with the transparency of government. Likewise, to provide an option for looking at whether an employee leaving county employment, whether it be through retirement, or end of contract, or resignation, as long as they leave in good standing, would have to wait one year before they could apply and not be within the same board term as when they left county government. And another option to consider is that no current county employee be on a board and be a voting member. So, those are just some of the opportunities we have here that I had discussed, and I've discussed them with council at times, time to time. But there's three boards in particular that require a lot of focus. One, obviously, is the Ethics Commission, and two, the Planning Commission and the Board of Appeals, both of which are positions that are funded at the rate of $500 per session. So, that's the rationale for this. This doesn't take long. We could have it back to us in the turnaround of 30 days, I believe. And at the same time, the members that are currently on this particular board, it's before it's today, would simply continue on until such time as they were either renewed or replaced. So, that's the sum of my proffering to the board on this.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment to remove the appointments item from the agenda today, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
So, the motion fails three to two. So, the motion we have before us is the motion to approve the agenda as presented. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Public service announcements. Dr. Polsky.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, as we start our review this week, I will say cautious optimism, it would be the theme. Cautious because as this first slide shows, this is the first week since the end of the holidays that we've actually seen an increase in cases in Calver County. We are back up over 100 cases per week. Last week, we had gotten down into the 70s. As you can see, that for elementary school and middle school ages, we've seen stability. High school ages, we have seen a significant bump up, a little bit more than doubling of cases in that age group, as well as young adults. As far as vaccine administration, this shows the local health departments across the state, and actually, pretty much all of them are doing great. Even the health departments that are at the far end of the scale, like Allegheny, are still administering close to 100% of the vaccines that they're getting. And Calver County, which is pretty much right in the middle there, is showing 108% again, as we talked about before, a reflection of the extra doses, so to speak, in some of the Pfizer shipments earlier that make things give you that above 100. More importantly, when we take a look at the percentage of the population broken down by counties that have been vaccinated, Calver is doing very well. The state average, this is for the entire population, not just eligible, meaning that this includes children. Statewide, 16% of people have been vaccinated, or one out of every six Marylanders at this point has received at least a first dose of vaccine. Calver County, we're at 18.2%. If you take a look strictly at the adult population, one out of every four Calver adults have been vaccinated, at least a first dose at this point. Of a bit of concern, and I just want to spend a minute or two on this, is that in Southern Maryland in particular, we've seen case rates go up over the past two weeks. Currently, the county with the highest COVID prevalence, this is infections, these are not vaccines, the county and the state with the highest rate of COVID infections is Charles County, and that is followed by Anarundel, St. Mary's, and Prince George's in that order. So, when we take a look at a map, and this is case rates, the other was prevalence, or I'm going back, so this is percent positivity, these are case rates, and we've talked about that before. So, there are two different ways of looking at the same issue. You can see that the counties that bracket us are higher in case rates, and Calver is sort of an island, which is not terribly buffered. I did speak to the head of the state labs and state epidemiology yesterday, asking if they perhaps could take a look to see if there is an increase in the COVID variants in Southern Maryland. Apparently, that's not possible with the capacity they have right now. That would be one potential explanation, is that we may have some strains down in Southern Maryland that are easier to transmit. Again, I think that the cautious optimism at this point is that our rates are certainly lower than they were going back several months ago, but our case rates right now are comparable to mid-November. They're not where we were last summer. They're about five to six times higher than that, so we're certainly not out of the woods. Good thing is that we're seeing more and more people getting vaccinated every week, and we're seeing fewer hospitalizations, although in the last three weeks, eight Calver residents have died from COVID. Keeping in mind, those are people that were infected likely three to four weeks prior. But statewide, we're still seeing close to 100 deaths per week. So, as the CDC issues their new guidance, which I was happy to see, that for people who have been vaccinated, as long as they are in the company of other people who have completed their vaccination series, they can start to go without masks. It should not be overgeneralized. We still have to keep in mind that the virus is still very prevalent in the area, and the presence of the variants that could be more infectious, or potentially even more hazardous or deadly when people get infected, is very much a possibility. So, people should still take cautions when they're out in public, they should still avoid large gatherings, and when they have the opportunity to get vaccinated, regardless of which of the three, they should take that opportunity and make sure that they sign up and complete, if it's a too-serious vaccination, that they complete both shots.
Doc, are you hearing of anybody dying from the actual shot?
No. So, I have not, we have not seen in Calver County a single anaphylactic reaction, that would be a serious allergic reaction. And there's been absolutely nationwide, there's been no instance of heart attacks or anything that would be a consequence of being vaccinated. So, these vaccines have been extraordinarily safe. And people need to keep in mind that the virus, everybody's taking a chance, not only for themselves, but if they transmit to somebody else, what the consequence can be. So, certainly, the risk of the vaccine is negligible at this point, and we've all seen the consequences of the virus. And, you know, we're talking strictly in health terms, but we also, again, we've touched in the past on impacts on businesses, certainly impacts on kids getting back to school. So, at this point, we want to do everything we can to make sure that when the vaccines become available, people are taking advantage of that, we keep lowering the rates down, and as soon as we can, get as close as we can back to business as normal.
So, there's been a real big push to get, you know, big groups of families wanting to get their kids back into schools, and they had a big discussion over at the Republican headquarters, I heard the other night, and your name was brought up multiple times of being, part of the problem was, is that the six-foot rule on buses and in the classrooms is what part of the problem is. I don't know, what, you know, what are they doing in other counties that are going back to school? Is it, they're saying that they're not six-foot, they're closer. Have you any thoughts on that, or anything that we can do to try to get the kids going back to school?
First off, as you're aware, kids are going back to school.
Right, right.
And I think by this week, the high schools are now back in school as well.
Right.
So, every child whose parent feels comfortable with them going back has the opportunity to, and they are on every other week right now, but had the opportunity to get back in school.
Right.
Which is just terrific work compared to where we were, you know, a month or two ago. Maryland State Department of Education has strict rules as to when and under what circumstances people need to be quarantined if they get exposed to someone. So, if you have students who are closer than six feet apart, if one of those students comes in with the infection, and keeping in mind that symptoms start two days after somebody's potentially contagious, anyone within six feet needs to be excluded for two full weeks. We have no local control over that. That's just the way it is. So, the more kids you bring in at the same time, the more chance that one of those children in the classroom will carry the virus, and the more children who will need to be excluded for two weeks as a result. So, we're caught in a bit of a dilemma. Do we do everything that we would like to do, and then risk having to exclude, increase the chances we will need to exclude, and then the number of children who need to be excluded goes up? Or do we take a more moderate approach and have fewer children in the classroom, and if one of them does carry the virus, there's enough buffer around where the other kids don't need to be quarantined? And ultimately, this is not my decision. It's important to keep in mind that this is a decision by the school board, school administration. We provide advice, but I have no authority to have kids back in school. I have no authority to exclude kids from school. So, what I provide, again, to the schools, and have been all the way along, is what can you do to make sure that you're maximizing the ability for kids to get back to school, keeping in mind the consequences when someone ends up bringing the virus in? And I think it's also important for families to keep in mind that we've managed to have every teacher, every teacher's aide, every bus driver, everyone in the school system who was willing to get vaccinated, has had the opportunity to receive their vaccines. So, that also makes sure that we're not going to have teachers out, so that teachers can be there in person for students, that the bus drivers are going to be safe, and the buses are still out there to make their rounds. So, there are a lot of things that have been done. In addition, we work with the school system to make sure that in the few areas of certain school buildings where airflow was not as good as we would like to see, that they had HEPA filters specifically in those areas, they had portable HEPA filters in several of the schools, to make sure that we're decreasing viral counts. There's a lot of work that has been done to make sure that when the kids did get back in, that we were going to have as few quarantines as possible.
But, Dr. Polsky, at the end of the day, it is you, because the school board's following your guidance. And I understand where you say it's their decision, but they are following your guidance as to how to reopen the schools. So, you know, at the end of the day, you know, they're trying to do what you say. So, you know, you play a pretty significant role in how they're reopening schools. If you look at the data, transmission between young children is very minimal. And there are examples of schools across this country that have been in normal mode, fairly normal mode, since last August, that haven't had significant outbreaks. And as you say, now we have all the teachers vaccinated, we have everybody connected to the school system vaccinated, which is wonderful. So, that only leaves the children, and if the parents make a conscious decision, you know, whether they want their child physically in school or not, to me, that just seems to open up, crack that door a little wider, because, you know, the social impacts of not having kids together certainly has to come into factor when you're thinking about the decisions that we make. And as we found out, some children do learn virtually, others just cannot. They just can't do it. So, those children have lost a year.
More of the younger ones, it seems like, yeah.
A year of education, they've lost a year of socialization, they've lost a year of athletic, you know. There's been a significant impact, and it's just at the point we are today, I think people would like to see, you know, a more aggressive plan to get our kids back to normal, whatever that's going to be. I understand that's not going to be what it used to be, but for those parents that assume some risk, have weighed the factors within their own families, and want to make those decisions, parents are just getting a little concerned about this.
It's becoming a point-finger game, and when the parents are going to the school board, they're going, well, the health department's telling us, we got to do this, and that's their way out, you know, to not open the schools kind of thing. So, I'm just trying to give you, you know, they're getting ready, have another, they're going to have a rally down at the Board of Ed, and it's just a lot of stuff being stirred up. So, like Buddy said, you know, if parents feel comfortable enough to send their kids back to school, and some are doing fine at home on the virtual learning, but, you know, they have that option to do it, kind of thing. So, if we can, you know, cut back on the distancing maybe a little bit to allow it, or work, you know, have a work session with the school board and the health department, and come up with a plan to get these kids back to school.
And I'm certainly open to further discussions. Dr. Curry and I are talking, and tomorrow, we know the governor has a press conference, and as usual, I have no idea what he's going to say, but he has a press conference scheduled for this afternoon, so Dr. Curry and I are talking, we haven't said a final time, but it'll probably be somewhere around late morning tomorrow to discuss additional options. It is not lost on me, and I have been a strong and consistent advocate of getting kids back in school.
Right.
I also am aware that about a third of parents are keeping, still keeping their kids out, and there is, there will certainly be some who have felt comfortable at this point, who may not feel comfortable if their kids are going back into a classroom with 20 other kids. And the kids have no choice in that. So, there's always a trade-off with every decision that gets made.
And the longer that we keep them out, I think we're losing students to the private schools and homeschooling, and it's eventually going to be a domino effect with funding from the state, because no matter what, the schools still have to pay all that money to maintain the schools, turn the lights on, and do all those things, and with less enrollment, we're going to be losing millions and millions of dollars. So, the sooner we can get them back in school, I think that that'll help, you know, hopefully people will put their kids back in to, you know, trust of the public schools also.
And Commissioner McConkey, I certainly don't want to get into a financial discussion that's beyond, but every school system is going through the same thing.
Yep.
And I just, I can't imagine that at the state level, they're going to penalize every school system across the state. I think the question is, into next school year?
Right.
What happens at that point?
Right.
And my hope is that well before the next school year starts, that at least the FDA will approve the vaccines for adolescents, which means middle school and high school students, where transmission rates are the same as for adults. And we shouldn't overlook the fact that although younger children, pre-adolescent children are not as likely to transmit, they can still transmit. And still, the estimation is about 50% of the rate of an adult or a teenager. And some of those kids have grandparents, and there's still personal contact, and we can't neglect the, you know, the knowledge that virus transmission doesn't stay in a classroom. So, although the chances of another child becoming infected and becoming seriously ill is very, very small, any infections that get transmitted from child to child potentially then go outside of the classroom and impact other family members and people at social events, and, you know. So, again, my hope is that we can continue making progress and moving forward, and I'm continuing to have discussions frequently with the schools. Honestly, no one wants these kids at home. And it's just a question of, you know, you can't have everything you want right now. What is the most reasonable compromise in all this? So, if there are other meetings that you would like me to attend, I'm certainly very willing to do that. And, you know, we'll hear what the governor says today, and again, Superintendent Curry and I will have a discussion again tomorrow.
So, the other issue that came to light since our last meeting was county fields and teams, sports teams playing.
Right.
So, can you talk a little bit about that decision?
Yeah. So, again, the, it's more visually apparent here, again, the four counties that surround us, Anarundel, Prince George's, Charles, and St. Mary's, right now have the four highest rates of COVID in the state. We're dealing with all the variants that you've heard about, the one that was first found in England, the one that was first found in South Africa, the one that was first found in Brazil, and now there are variants in New York and California. They're all present in the state. We don't know what's going to happen over these next few weeks. Our rate of infections has gone up, and not insignificantly. They went up by about 30% in one week. We had 70-some cases the week before, and we have over 100 this week. We had three people die from COVID last week, none the week before, five the week prior to that.
In Calver?
In Calver. And we have spring break coming up, and there's certainly potential.
Is the strain getting weaker at all?
No.
It's not?
No.
Okay.
And the variants, although there's no conclusive proof that the variants are more deadly, there is some suggestion, at least from the one that was first discovered in the UK, but all those variants are more transmissible, and there is some degree of less protection from the vaccines. So, there is legitimate concern. What we are asking for at this point is a watch period over this next month. Let's see what happens with our surrounding counties, see what happens in our county, see what happens with spring break and the variants. So, we've got three things right now that are all in play as far as potential increase or surge in cases locally. If the counts look good, two weeks after spring break, then I'm more than happy to say, you know, let's just go ahead and do whatever. This previous weekend, not the one we just finished, but the one before, there was a so-called Maryland Wrestling Championship that was held just across the border in Pennsylvania. We know of at least four cases of COVID linked to that from people in Calver. We don't know how many others have not been tested, or were asymptomatic carriers. And so, when you start having, and I will say it's not all the wrestlers themselves, actually, three of the four cases that we know of are the parents. And so, when people are doing travel, it's not just what happens on the field, it's mostly what happens on the sidelines or in the stands, and people are going to, you know, oftentimes, they're eating at restaurants, or doing this, that, and the other. When you have, so we're not, we're not saying that kids can't play sports. The fields are open. What we're saying is that we don't want travel teams going in and out and potentially bringing virus back in, or having teams from other counties bring the virus in, and really, just for the next month. If the map looked different, then what I would be saying would be different, but, you know, I can't ignore what the science and the data shows. So, I'm hoping that a month from now, I will have very good news, that the shadings, the colors, in our surrounding counties will have gone down, that we won't have seen any major impact either from variants or from spring break, and then at that point, you know, things open back up. I'll get back to what we were talking about earlier. The most important thing isn't what's happening with a small fraction of our kids going outside of the county to play sports. The most important thing is every child, every teenager getting back in school. Every time someone goes out to another county, brings a virus back here, that means at least one, if not multiple, students are going to be excluded from school for two full weeks. Our focus should be on getting kids back in school.
All right. All right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Doc. Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mike?
And Doc, I hear everything you're saying. I think the big question that I have that people keep saying to me is that most of our people that work, that live here, work out of county. So, the data has shown that appears that we're a very transient place, so the traveling's happening anyway. So, they're having a disconnect of going, well, wait a minute, we haven't locked down our borders. What is the difference with teams traveling in and out? And I don't know how to answer that.
Right. So, Commissioner Hart, there is no perfect, and clearly, we're not going to stop people from going to work. Work environments, most work environments tend to be a bit more controlled. We've, you know, for most of us, either we played sports as kids, or we had children who played sports, and we all know that on sidelines, some people are going to, you know, follow guidelines, and they're going to be people, and I've seen it, and if any of you've been out to sports fields, I'm sure you've seen this well, that there are always going to be, you know, parents, family members, anyone who's coming out, who are hanging out with people from other households, no masks on. We see, not infrequently, actually, for this past week, when we do contact tracing, the number-one gathering spot, when we ask people who have had infections, you know, where have they gathered? You know, it could be, you know, a religious service, it could be at a movie theater, it could, you know, family gatherings. The number-one this week was sports gatherings. So, we're not making arbitrary decisions, and it's important to keep in mind that it's not just the person, this is not a situation where I'm making a decision for myself. Decisions that people make impact others as well. And we have, again, keep in mind that, you know, team goes out, they end up with three, four cases of COVID as a result of traveling outside of the county. They come back, they're feeling okay when they first come back, then there will almost certainly be other students in their classes who will now need to be excluded for two weeks. It's not fair to them. So, there's nothing that is completely the way that we want it to be. And the question is, you know, at this moment, and again, I emphasize, I'm only talking for the next month. I'm not talking about some indefinite, but, you know, just want to see what the data shows, want to see what our case rates are locally, and if things are looking good, which I think there's a very good chance of that.
Do you get that map every month, I guess, updated?
I can bring it in every week, if you like.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, this is as of yesterday.
Okay.
You can see the dates on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, through the 7th. So, I guess through Sunday. This was pulled off yesterday.
So, the president said last week that by the end of May, every adult in this country that wants a shot should have one. I guess the question that some have asked is, so, once all the adults get vaccinated, then are going to be able to lose some? is, so once all the adults get vaccinated, then are going to be loose enough? Or are we in a place where until all the kids get vaccinated, we're not really going to open up? What, what do you think about that?
It depends on what percentage of people actually get vaccinated. So having vaccine available and people getting vaccinated are certainly two different things. The epidemiologists, nationally respected epidemiologists are saying that somewhere between 70 to 80% of people need to have solid immunity before we're not going to see continued widespread transmission. My hope is that we will see vaccination rates close. We know that for people who have had at least recent infections, that they also will have pretty strong immunity. We don't know how quickly it wears off, but you know, it should be pretty good. So the combination of those who've been infected and those getting vaccinated, if that's getting somewhere around 75%, then my expectation would be that we'll see, if not all, at least most, uh, of the restrictions lifted. Separate question is schools. And I think they're, um, again, you're not going to please everybody. There're going to be parents who are going to be horrified if, if classrooms are at full capacity and they're not going to let their kids back in. And then there're going to be parents who are upset if you don't let their kids in every day of every week. There's no making everybody happy. So whether there are, you know, polls taken of parents as to, under what circumstances would they still feel comfortable with their kids going back to school and then picking? Uh, but, you know, the reality is that decisions need to be made. Consequences will happen based on those. And regardless, there's always going to be somebody who's not going to be happy with the outcome.
One, and to your point, that no one, no one's asked for this at all. Um, we basically had the Spanish flu a hundred years ago, and I hope we don't have to experience this for another hundred years. Um, I, some of my personal research, this was from the Baltimore Sun, um, an article in the 17th. And, and I think for, for most, it's, it's the contradictions in what we hear, you know what I mean? And trying to rationalize. And for me, the quote, "All things were chaos until the mind came to set things in order." This has just been chaos. So trying to, to, to place a rational discussion is difficult. Um, the, this article last month, but, but, but I look for baselines, Dr. Polsky, and, and this was from last month, I believe it was February 17th. It was about reopening schools and, um, it, this is just one paragraph. You need to read the entire article to get the gist of it, but this is just one thing that came out at me. And it says, "On Friday, the U.S. Centers for Disease Control said children are less likely to spread the virus within schools than adults when there is low-level spread within the community, a positivity rate of less than 5% and not more than nine new cases per 100,000 in a week. Schools can fully reopen without social distancing, but with everyone wearing mask." And then it said, "In areas of high community spread, the CDC said schools should use social distancing, masking, and other mitigation factors. The CDC said schools can open safely without vaccinating teachers." So that was last month. And I guess, you know.
And all that sounds very reasonable. And if you go back through, one of the things you said was, um, less than nine, less than 10, not nine or less cases per 100,000. Well, last week, we had over 100 cases per 100,000. So we're more than 10 times the current transmission rate than what that article says is reasonable as far as kind of like throwing the doors open. So the, the, I think the, the two confusing or frustrating out of lots and lots, the two main ones are that, like you just read off, there was a whole litany of statistics and criteria that were in there. And, you know, it's hard to keep all of them straight. Um, and so people key in on one or two, they sort of forget about some others. And then, well, it meets this criterion, then why aren't we doing it? Well, because it doesn't meet, you know, this other one. Um, and the other is that you can make all the rational statements that you want, but we're dealing with the realities of human behavior, which is not always rational. And, um, and so trying to merge those two, trying to carry the realities of human behavior into a more rational realm has been a continuing challenge in this country. So again, we will, I don't, I don't want to belabor this too much more, but we will continue to, again, talk to the schools. Um, you know, we have been doing a better job than our surrounding counties. And, and the reality is that there will be kids who will have their grandparents for their next birthday. And when the holidays roll around, that if we were at the rates that some of the other counties in the state, their grandparents would not be here this year or next year. So we're talking about, you know, the trade-off between a small number of kids not being able to travel outside of the county to play baseball or soccer versus what are life-altering circumstances every time more infections wear up. And again, there is no perfect with this. We're all, I, I think people are genuinely trying to do their best and balance things that, you know, this is not a math equation at some point. Um, so a, again, in any event, uh, you know, we'll continue this conversation. Um, and, you know, kids are foremost and have been foremost in my mind all the way through this.
I know they're having a board meeting this week and they're allowing public, uh, discussion from the public. You might want to either watch it after or during, just to kind of get an idea what, where parents are, are at. Yep.
And, and we're not sheltered. We, we talked to people, um, before I came over today, I was on the phone with, with a community member. People email me. Uh, and, and so I think that's another, is it, I think sometimes, you know, the government is looked at as, you know, just like in a bunker somewhere. Um, we're out in the community all the time. We're talking to people, you know, our staff, they live here, they have kids who play sports. Um, we're not sheltered from the consequences of the decisions.
Well, it's just, last Friday, we celebrated the one-year anniversary of the first case in Maryland. And a couple of weeks later, all the shutdowns started and nobody thought we'd be where we are today. And.
No. And, and I will say that if behaviors had been different, we wouldn't be here where we are today. And, and we all collectively have some responsibility in what's happened.
Well, we're a country made up of freedoms and it's hard to give up those freedoms. So it's our nature.
Some other things as well.
So, uh, we appreciate you coming in that weekend. I don't know if Mr. Hutchins or Hart have anything else to add?
No, thank you, Mr. President, no. But, uh, Doctor, thank you for what you and your staff are continuing to do. It's a long road and it's a road that's not well-defined. And you're doing the best job you can, and I fully support you there.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Hart? Who, okay, well, we thank you, Dr. Polsky, for coming in again this week. And I guess we'll see you next time.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great day. So next item on the agenda is a proclamation. Commissioner Weems?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This proclamation is Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month 2021. Whereas in 1987, President Ronald Reagan first proclaimed March Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month to provide the encouragement and opportunities necessary for people with developmental disabilities to reach their potential. And whereas, in the 34 years since the first proclamation, we have made progress improving the lives of individuals with developmental disabilities, noting challenges still remain in providing full inclusion. And whereas, Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month is a time to celebrate the many contributions people with developmental disabilities make to our society and to recognize the efforts made to achieve a culture of meaningful and full inclusion of individuals with developmental disabilities in all facets of community life. And whereas, through awareness and outreach to identify barriers and develop solutions, the idea of true inclusion and integration can become a reality and highlight the principle that everyone benefits when people with and without disabilities live, learn, and earn together in the community. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the month of March be known as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. Be it further proclaimed that by this action, it be known the many ways in which people with and without developmental disabilities come together to form strong and diverse communities, given under our hands and seal this ninth day of March 2021.
Thank you, Commissioner Weems. The next item on the agenda is Employee of the Month. Do we have Lisa Talame with us?
I am here, Commissioners. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Ladies and gentlemen, how are you?
Good.
Uh, my name is Lisa Talame. I'm part of the procurement team. And I'm here today as the awards coordinator of the Employee Recognition Committee. It is my privilege to introduce Calver County Government's February 2021 Employee of the Month. Before I begin our award winner, before I introduce our award winner, here is a quick reminder of what we look for in an employee of the month. This award acknowledges individual excellence for superior job performance or special, um, individual efforts which exceed an employee's normal job duties. Some of the suggested criteria are effectiveness with public contact, respect of fellow employees, quality and/or quantity of work, contributions towards improving organizational morale, and actions that improve our public image. Anyone can nominate um, a coworker for this award, simply have it signed by the employee supervisor and their department head. Please check out the ERC's webpage on the county's Intranet uh, for more information. We encourage all employees to be on the lookout for worthy recipients. So without further ado, our February 2021 Employee of the Month is Felicia Harrod, Administrative aide for Planning and Zoning. Congratulations, Felicia. So Felicia, uh, supports all her coworkers in planning and zoning. She has performed and, in an exemplary manner during this pandemic. She worked with technology services throughout most of the year to identify equipment which could be used for network ac- access when laptops were not immediately available. This enabled staff to telework and have touchdown spots when they worked in the office. Felicia is dependable, trustful, honest, and is respected and appreciated by staff. She has a positive attitude, a strong work ethic, and a smile when offering support. Working long hours, she is often told, "Go home, Felicia." Her experience with county processes has been most helpful as planning and zoning is hiring new employees. She has developed relationships with key personnel in other departments, which has enabled the new hires to become quickly acclimated into their position. This is so helpful for the department to stay on track and focused on projects. Finally, her support of external customers is a model of patience, tact, and professionalism. Felicia always goes the extra mile, referring appropriately to staff and following up with customers to ensure their questions are thoroughly answered. Felicia is an inspiration to her supervisors and coworkers, performing, performing her duties with integrity and skills that she exhibits daily. Felicia is another example of the unheralded employee of Calver County Government, which greatly improves our public image. The ERC is delighted to be a part of this recognition, and we thank this exceptional coworker, Felicia, for being a positive support to citizens and coworkers alike, for making the county more approachable, transparent, accessible, and projecting what we all know, that Calver County is the greatest place to live and work. Thank you, Felicia, for all you do. And thank you for those who took the time out to nominate Felicia. Um, and again, thank you, Commissioners, for your support of the ERC.
Thank you, Lisa. I think we have Mary Beth on.
I would love to ask if Mary Beth has anything she'd like to say.
I do. Um, can you hear me okay?
I hear you.
We're in the conference room here in Planning and Zoning, and I have Felicia with me. And it is my honor and privilege to present her with her certificate. Um, we're just so proud of Felicia. Couldn't do our jobs without her. Her customer service is off the charts. She will not stop at, um, not finding an answer for someone. She will reach out to everyone in the department if she has to, to make sure a question goes answered. She won't leave it unanswered. Um, the good, "Go home, Felicia" happens quite often. If, you know, I'm here after hours and she's still here, I'm like, "Felicia, go home." And she says the same to me. So we have a little running joke. But I am just really, really, um, happy that Felicia gets to be recognized for all Calver County Government to know um, how much we appreciate her. And I've even gotten compliments from other departments when it was released that she was, was being honored today, how much they help, she helps them as well. So, thank you, Felicia. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. So Felicia, Felicia, would you like to say anything? No, Felicia doesn't want to say anything. Well, Felicia, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and all the citizens of Calver County, we want to thank you for your dedicated work. Makes Calver County a better place to live. So, uh, thank you on behalf of everybody for what you do. And have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So next item on the agenda is appointments. Deputy Director Vasallo?
Good morning, Commissioners Linda Vasallo. You have an appointment, two appointments to the Planning Commission this morning. Um, you have several applicants, but only two vacancies, one from Commissioner District Two and another from Commissioner District Three. You do not have a recommendation from the Planning Commission, but staff is seeking your direction and a motion to reappoint or appoint new members.
Chair, we're going to take a motion.
I would like to make a motion to reappoint Gregory Kernan.
So I have a motion to reappoint Gregory Kernan. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to reappoint Gregory Kernan. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
That we appoint Victor Freeland to the Planning Commission.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second to appoint Victor Freeland to the Planning Commission. Discussion.
Just one, one point. Um, to Commissioner Hutchins', uh, revision of the agenda earlier and the points he was making, um, if, if I may, my 20% would like to move forward with his initiatives, and that's all.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is old business, Department of Finance and Budget.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tim Hayden, Director of Finance and Budget here. Uh, background, the Department of Finance and Budget is, I'm sorry, wrong memo. Background, while the fiscal year 2021 budget was being prepared, that was back in the spring of 2020, the uncertainty surrounding COVID-19 was immense. The Board of County Commissioners deferred making decisions on new staffing requests and new initiatives requested from county management. A plan was developed to review these items mid-fiscal year. The hope was for additional clarity on the impact of COVID-19 on the county's finances. The Board met with staff on January 5th and January 12th to discuss the request. Some of the requested position actions were approved. In compliance with the code of Calver County, a public hearing was held on February 23rd, 2021. This board action from the public hearing required a 10-day waiting. This board action from the public hearing required a 10-day waiting period, and today's request is to complete this adjustment. This is the completion of the 10-day waiting period. Fiscal impact. The annual total cost of the staffing changes are $4,353,735. This amount includes salaries, benefits, overtime, and required equipment. The impact for the remaining portion of fiscal year 2021, which is estimated at four months, March to June, is $1,933,000, $1,933,422. Staff recommends the, I'm going to move to the requested motion even better. I'll share there have been no public comment, and staff requests a motion to close the record and to approve and adopt Budget Adjustment 213. And before you do that, I'll share that the staff recommended budget for '22 is on the county's website now.
Thank you, Director Hayden. So, Chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Hutchins?
Move to adopt the staff recommendation for the budget adjustment in 213.
And close the record.
And close the record, correct?
Second.
Yes, sir. Have a motion and a second to close the record, sign the resolution adopting the budget adjustment for fiscal year '21. Discussion. Director Hayden, just for the record, there is sufficient surplus funds in '21 to cover this additional cost, correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Director Hayden. So the next item on the agenda is consent, and there's only one item under consent. That would be extension of the local state of emergency, and that's been adopted under consent. So, next item on the agenda is new business, item number one. County Administrator?
Morning, Commissioners, to our citizens. Mark Willis, County Administrator. This is a memo on behalf of Gail Hatfield with the elections. It's a budget adjustment request. Background, the 2020 presidential election cycle was unsurpassed by any previous election. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, new ways of conducting election will be utilized. This includes the procurement of personal protective equipment, the creation of ballot drop boxes, and the use of vote centers. This resulted in unexpected increased costs. Discussion, the State Board of Elections sent the second quarter fiscal bill of $180,825.07 for Calvert County's share of the presidential election. This includes manufacturing and delivery of ballot drop boxes, PPE supplies, mailing of mail-in ballot applications, ballots, and the use of a call center. After allocating funds from within our budget, there is still a need for additional funding. Fiscal impact, an additional $21,530 will be needed to be added to contracted services. Also note that there is $31,800 in the Board of Elections organizational budget that will be used to redirect it to this bill. Conclusion, recommendation, the Calvert County Board of Elections recommends the Board of County Commissioners approve the attached budget adjustment, number, budget adjustment BA 221 in the amount of $53,330. That accounts for the movement of all funds necessary to account for the need. Your decision, Commissioner.
Chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion that the Board of County Commissioners approve the attached budget adjustment BA 221 in the amount of $53,300.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the budget adjustment BA 221 in the amount of $53,330. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We do hear you, Commissioner Hart.
Thank you.
Next item under new business, item two, tax credits for conservation lots. Mr. Attorney John Norris.
Thank you, Commissioners. Pursuant to Chapter 136, Article 5 of the Calvert County Code, the Board of Commissioners has the authority to grant a property tax credit to properties within the county owned by a land trust that is subject to a conservation easement and used, one, to assist in the preservation of a natural area, two, generally to promote conservation, or three, for the maintenance of, A, natural area for public access, or B, sanctuary for wildlife. The Southern Calvert Land Trust has submitted applications for tax credits for properties located at 12846 Eagle Drive and 8515 White Sands Drive, each located in Lesby. Since the beginning of the program, the board has granted tax credits for 159 lots that are owned by this trust. The documentation submitted by the trust demonstrates these two properties will meet the requirements to receive the requested property tax credit. The total fiscal impact for fiscal year '21 is zero. Despite the wording of the request, the county cannot refund taxes already paid. The total fiscal impact for FY '22 and years thereafter starts at $765.40. The board may grant the tax credit as requested by the Southern Calvert Land Trust, so we're asking for your favorable approval. Motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion that the board grant the tax credit as requested by the Southern Calvert Land Trust in the amount, I guess, $765.40, is that?
That is where it starts. It'll go up each as taxes go up.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second that we grant the request for the tax credit for those lots. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to work sessions. Work session one, Department Planning, Zoning, TDR Committee Recommendations. Mary Beth.
(inaudible) sit at the desk, since she's going to be doing the present page. Mary Beth Pope, Director of Planning and Zoning. With me today is Deputy Director Judy Maple, zoning planner Rachel Lachey, and three members of the TDR committee. We have Rodney Gertz. Three members of the TDR committee, Wilson Freeland, Rodney Gertz, and Steve Oberg. And I will read the beginning of the memo. The Board of County Commissioners requested to reconvene the Transfer Development Rights TDR Committee that originally met back in 2015 when text amendment 1502 for the TDR sliding scale was proposed and adopted. In 2020, a new text amendment 20-02 was proposed to change the sliding scale for TDR requirements to be more equitable in terms of housing type and therefore an increase in some of the requirements. The text amendment was presented to the Planning Commission, and they did not agree with the text amendment moving forward at this time, but asked that it be evaluated with the Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan Update Process. The Board of County Commissioners requested the TDR Committee review the TDR program and make recommendations for the Commissioners to consider. So today will be, the committee met four times and has a consensus of items that they'd like to present for your consideration. So Rachel's going to be presenting those, and we recommend that you review and discuss these recommendations and direct staff to work with the TDR Committee and Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board on any of the items that you support to enact the proposed recommendations. So with that, Rachel.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
How are everybody?
Good.
Good.
Very good. And you?
I'm good.
Good.
So repeating a little bit of what was in the memo, but this all began from a text amendment that was proposed in 2020 to change the TDR sliding scale in Prince Frederick, Lesby, and Solomons, the requirement to make the sliding scale more equitable among housing types. The amendment was presented to the BOCC in August and approved for a work session with the Planning Commission. Upon being presented to the Planning Commission, they thought that this should be considered as part of the Prince Frederick Master Plan development process. So, the next work session with the BOCC in September, it was decided to reconvene the TDR Committee that originally came up with the original TDR sliding scale back in 2015 to review the state of the TDR program and make recommendations. This slide shows a list of the TDR committee members. They have met a total of four times between October and January, and this preceding presentation is kind of a, everything that they've been talking about and what they've come up with as terms of recommendations for, for the program. The TDR Committee agrees on the following set of circumstances. The program is out of balance between the supply and demand of TDRs. The TDR price is inaccurate due to the imbalance of the supply and demand, which if left up to the free market drives the TDR price down, which is an inaccurate true value of the TDR for the farmer. Completing TDR transactions is difficult, time-consuming, and costly because of the private negotiations that are unreliable. The county's land preservation program is suffering from moratorium placed on the creation of new APDs that have been in place for years since the TDRs have become stagnant as compared to the 80s, 90s, and early 2000s. The committee has put together a package of recommendations that if approved together, they feel will put the TDR program back on the right track. Items number three, five, and seven highlighted, these items are already in place and are not, are planned to remain through the county's zoning ordinance update. So we're briefly going to review items one, two, four, and six. These are establish a TDR bank managed by the county, reinstate previous level of land preservation funding, lift the moratorium on creation of APDs after the Ag Board's recommended program changes are adopted in the rules and regulations, and expand the rural legacy areas to include all of the priority preservation areas. Are there any questions at this point?
I'll just wait till again.
Okay. First, I would like to note these recommendations work to support the county's comprehensive plan goals. Since the initial comprehensive plan, the county's goals have been to preserve the rural landscape while creating vibrant town centers. The Comp Plan vision is a landscape dominated by forests and fields and town centers that are attractive, convenient, and interesting places to live, work, and shop. Goal one, preserve the rural character, its prime farmland in continuous forts and environmentally sensitive areas. And goal three, develop town centers to include full range of housing types and direct commercial and industrial uses to appropriate locations. These two values work together and mutually sustain each other, supporting, encouraging, and directing growth away from the rural areas and helping preserve the rural landscape and focusing development in town centers. The Comp Plan states that town centers are our main growth areas and primary receiving areas for TDRs. This has been difficult to achieve in the past with majority of growth occurring outside the town centers. The Comp Plan calls for initiatives and incentives to reverse this, to have 60% growth in the town centers and no more than 40% outside. So move on to our first recommendation, to establish a TDR bank. The TDR Committee agreed that one of the primary barriers of the TDR program was the TDR transaction process. The sale of TDRs is currently completed, negotiated, without county involvement up until the point of recording transaction documents after county attorney review and seller-buyer signatures. The committee explained that the uncertainty and difficulty of finding a buyer, negotiating price, and completing the transaction makes it difficult on both sides. The committee agreed it would be advantageous to both the farmer and the developer if the process could be streamlined so that the farmer and the developer would be able to bend and know what they could do. The committee proposed that the county manage a TDR bank and administer TDR sales from the farmer and then to the developer. This would create a one-stop shop for TDR transactions. It would help create a dependable, stable market for both sides. The proposal is for the bank to operate as a revolving loan fund. Initial seed funds would be replenished to purchase more TDRs as the initial TDR sell. The TDR bank could begin as soon as FY '22 with BOCC approval funding. The proposal is to keep a stable set price for the TDRs of $4,500 with an additional administrative fee to cover the county's costs for managing the bank. The TDR Committee would reconvene to review the TDR price as needed. The TDR value of the bank could be reevaluated every so many years to make sure that it was accurate compared to recent land values. The set $4,500 price was recognized by the committee after reviewing previous staff analysis of when the BOCC was looking at setting the PAR price and looking at other programs and how they set land values for establishing and selling preservation easements through the state, sorry. The committee also looked at past PAR cycles and how many applicants there were compared to the year's price, and the closer it was to $4,500, the participant rate increased. TDR bank funding mechanisms. The committee's number-one concern regarding the bank was for it to be successful long-term, a permanent reliable funding source would be necessary. The last couple of years, the BOCC has approved up to $1 million from the General Fund for land preservation that has mainly funded the PAR and LAAR programs. There is still currently fund balance roughly $1.5 million in the PAR account to be able to cover another PAR cycle during the upcoming fiscal year. So the TDR Committee and the Ag Board both agreed that this year's land preservation allocation could be used to seed the bank. If with the proposed startup funds, the bank is proving viable, other funding sources will be necessary and could include reinstatement of recordation tax funds, tax funds, and additional general fund contributions. The purchase and retirement PAR program is intended to continue on an annual basis separate from the TDR bank. Number two, reinstate previous level of land preservation funds. The committee agreed there needs to be a dedicated funding source for land preservation for there to be continued participation, a dependable funding source that people can rely on when needed. Prior to the recession of '07-'08, land preservation was funded in part through a recordation tax, Ag transfer tax, and the General Fund. An increase of the recordation tax was recommended by the Ag Board to the BOCC in 1999 and was increased from $330 to $5 for every 500 collected. The increase in the tax was designated to fund land preservation but was redirected after the recession hit. In your agenda packet is included the BOCC minutes and resolution for when this took place in 1999. The committee is requesting the BOCC reinstate previous recession funding level for land Number three, lift the moratorium based on the Ag Board's program changes being adopted. There are still properties that could participate in the TDR program. However, before the moratorium can be lifted, the program's rules and regulations do need to be updated. The rules and regulations have gone through a few text amendments in the early 2000s but have not gone through a comprehensive review and update since the program was initiated. The committee has recommended the Ag Board review the rules and recommendations and regulations and make recommendations. The committee would like to see the moratorium lifted at the same time the TDR bank is initiated. The Ag Board had its first meeting of the year on January 4th and has come up with a plan to begin the comprehensive review and to draft proposed changes. Proposed changes being considered by the Ag Board include revising the application of criteria for properties to be eligible to be designated as APDs. The Ag Board feels the criteria needs to be strengthened to adhere to the original intent of the program to preserve the last remaining pristine working agricultural farms in the Number five, expand the rural legacy areas to include all of the priority preservation areas. The TDR Committee agrees that the TDR program cannot be the only mechanism that drives land preservation in the county. The county should be looking at ways to increase participation in state programs to be able to leverage state funds for land preservation. A way to achieve this is to expand the rural legacy areas so that more properties are eligible to apply for rural legacy grant funds. Calvert's rural legacy areas do not encompass the county's priority preservation areas that have historically been set aside for planning purposes as areas to limit development and focus on land preservation. So the committee would like to propose to expand our rural legacy areas to include all of the priority preservation areas. This brings us to the recommendations and conclusions. Consider the committee's recommendations, one through seven. Consider the TDR funding mechanisms and approve the PAR General Fund allocation to be set aside to seed the bank for be set aside to seed the bank for fiscal year '22. Consider other funding mechanisms for the TDR bank and to continue past FY '22. And I would also like to run through a quick list of next steps if we, the board would like to move forward with a proposal. The TDR committee will complete the TDR bank implementation plan and details to bring back for the BOCC to consider. The Ag Board will review the program rules and regulations and proposed program changes for the BOCC to consider. And planning and zoning staff will develop a draft rural legacy area expansion for proposal for review by the BOCC and the state. And this brings us to if the commissioners have any questions, I would also like to open the floor if we do have representatives of the committee that may also have a few words that they'd like to say.
So would somebody like to speak from the committee?
Speak now forever hold your peace. Looked like to tell the truth.
And Steve.
Who are you?
You got up and Wilson was getting up behind you. It was, and then he sat back down since you came forward.
And I'm not speaking necessarily on behalf of the committee, so I'm sure Mr. Freeland will have an opportunity and take that. I just, real, real quick.
Who are you?
Yep, Steve Oberg. I'm the current chairman of the Ag Preservation Advisory Board. I am a member of the TDR committee. I was a member on the committee back in 2015. I just wanted to state to the board that the Ag Preservation Advisory Board does support this. We do see it as a package, however, so we would prefer that the Board does not pick and choose the various recommendations. For instance, establish the bank but not deal with the funding aspect of it. So we would like to see this as a, as a complete package. It was a compromise on behalf of the two communities that, that met four times in the last four or five months. It's not a perfect solution, but it works on both sides, and I hate to put it that way, but it is a good compromise and that's what it's all about. And so we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
So I have a question. So we, I guess the board every year votes on the TDR price. And we had set a price, I want to say it was around $2,800, and then two months later we upped it to $3,000. And now we're upping it another $1,500 three months later.
$4,000. We were at 32 something. We went to $4,000.
Commissioners, we were at $3750 was the set price.
Oh, 37, okay. So now, now we're upping it again to, to $4,500. Just, I mean, why, I mean, why do we keep upping it every two to three months? Isn't that something we should do annually? Would be my question.
So it's a little bit separate. So the, the price that the BOCC sets on an annual basis is the, for the PAR cycle, for the purchase and retirement cycle. The proposal for the TDR bank is going to be a separate program, and the committee felt that if the price wasn't set at the beginning and remains stable for several years, it wasn't going to accomplish the intent of the TDR bank was, is to have something that's reliable so that when that developer, that farmer is ready, they, they know what they're going to be looking at, what they're going to be able to do in terms of, of sale and what kind of price they're, they're going to be able to get instead of, you know, it changing from year to year and them not knowing.
So this is going to be the set price and it's not going to change?
That's the committee's recommendation. They have said that they would like to meet on a, a set basis. I think initially they threw out five years. So maybe in five years they would meet again, make sure that that $4,500 price was still realistic when looking at land values, that, that it was still comparable to what the TDR value is supposed to be.
So when they put this program together, it'll say that this price is good for five years?
If, if five years ends up being what they and you decide on, then, then yes.
I mean, I'd be good with that. That way we know what it is. It's not fluctuating and, you know, if somebody wants to build something, they don't have to guess at what it's going to cost them, and it could change in the middle of while they're doing a, a project.
Exactly.
So I would, I would be in favor of that.
Mr. Freeland.
Thank you, Wilson Freeland, French Frederick. I, I just wanted to repeat what Mr. Oberg mentioned. There, there's a synergistic effect of adopting the seven recommendations together. Any piecemeal approach will be much less effective. You know, we want to see it adopted as a package.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Hey, Mike. Go ahead, Mike.
So it, it sounds like, because for me, the intent of these two sides getting together was being that coming up with a price that, that the folks that have TDRs are comfortable with and the people that are going to buy them are comfortable with. So unless I'm misreading something, it sounds like both of them are in agreement and really they're going to be the ones that are paying the price anyway. Unless I'm missing something.
That's correct.
That's correct. That's correct, Mike. I just want to make sure that it doesn't keep fluctuating and that, you know, we know the, the developers and, and the farmers know that this is what they're going to be worth for five, five years.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay.
Okay. Mr. Gertz.
Rodney Gertz with Qualbyville Homes. Just, I guess to build upon what these guys have already said, you know, so we've kind of got together from all the communities, like Mike just said, between the development community, and this was a collaboration of, of kind of putting all the pieces together, which is very complex. And I think what I would probably stress to you guys, commissioners, I, I would never want to have your job in the sense that you, you, you have to get such a knowledge in so many aspects of what goes on the county. And just this one aspect of the TDRs, how it ties, how it ties to development, how it ties to the overall build out of the county, the overall goals to meet land preservation, the overall town center build out, it's, it's very complex. So I think the best thing we did was putting that committee back together and reevaluating it with, with kind of real open mind. Even what you guys had directed with, with basically saying we want to raise some TDRs on certain product, you know, this was kind of that price came into that, you know, are you buying two TDRs or you buying three versus paying, what you're paying for them? And lock it into something that works for everybody. The, the problem was supply and demand in this program had gotten out of balance. You had too much supply because everybody puts their farms in ag preservation per the county's request over the years, and then the market wasn't there to, to utilize them. So there's a, a bare minimum moral obligation, a maximum of legal obligation to, to find a path to resolution. And that path's going to be a combination of build out and, and some will be used obviously as building out projects that are, we've discussed. Some of it's going to be land preservation, the PAR fund being funded continually. And I really think you kind of just look at it, I'll make it as simple as you could, you know, 10,000 TDRs, roughly a number that's out, you know, between what's there, what's coming, what's, what's this not, $45 million situation. Development will probably eat up 20 or 25 million over time, maybe 30 million in, in land preservation or the PAR fund will eat up 10 to 15. That's really over a 15 to 20-year period. That's the simplicity side of it. How do we get there? And this is the vehicle that starts that. I think we should keep the committee intact to revisit once a year and keep all the communities coming together. I mean, this is ag preservation, this is staff, this is the farming community, even, you know, ag preservation kind of includes that, but then development community. And so it's, it's a great collaboration, once a year, come back and just tweak if it's necessary. But I think it's a, a good, we've all put our heads together and come, and came up with a good, a good starting point to, to get the, you know, get this ultimate situation resolved. You know, the use of the TDRs, the build out of the county, it all does tie together. This ties to workforce housing, this ties to the, you know, ag preservation. These, these all come together with having this formula right. And it's, it's very, as, as working in this industry day by day, it's a very delicate balance and it has to be right. And, and I think, and, you know, Kelly locking down the actual, you know, price for a five year term is a very important piece of it as well as having the funding. And I look at the funding as a sense of, you know, it's the carry cost on this funding of this bank. So some of the money that's allocated for the, you know, so it's, that's, that's how you guys should look at your ultimate cost is how do we, how do we, are we carrying that cost versus, you know, you're not buying the TDRs. TDRs will be used or retired or something along the way, you're carrying the carrying cost in the meantime. So hopefully you guys can see, see the weight of favor at this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, other commissioners? Today is just a work session. Yes, Commissioner Hutchins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gentlemen on the committee that worked on this, thank you very much. I think you've presented a very comprehensive package here for the way ahead. The biggest piece of that is the TDR bank. That, that inserts the county into a brokerage business, and it's a little more complex, I believe, than what's just on this slide. So I think that particular piece needs to be dealt with a little more in-depth, including our Department of Finance, as well as planning to be engaged in that as to its impact and how we would be able to sustain that over a long period of time. I, I think excellent points have been made, but we need to cross that threshold that we now become brokers of a commodity. And this is a little bit different than PAR. PAR is there for one sole reason, and that is to eliminate density. So that price i- is something that we're footing ourselves and we have to set it as we did just this past year. Now, the, the price last year that was set, as I recall, was more around $3,100, and then in May, when we moved to make it a, an issue as far as increasing the price due to the consist, to the considerations of the COVID process in order to instill a little more money into it that would stay in the county, it went to $4,000. So Commissioner McConkey's right there. It's, it's increased significantly since this time last year. That said, I, I think that it has good points. The other point is future APDs. Right now, we've got an excess, but those future APDs, I believe, hold some value if they're narrowly focused to, one, pristine land preservation, and, two, that surrounding the town center peripherals. So I think those are important points, too. But bottom line for me, the TDR bank needs a lot more work before we can launch into this as a package.
Commissioner Hart, I can't see you. Did you have a question or comment?
Oops, sorry, I keep, no, sir, I'm good.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Reeves.
Yes. I want to thank all the committee members present and those who are not for their efforts. And, and I, my 20% thinks we need to move forward with the bank. Government works slowly. I guess my question to us and staff is how do we set this path moving forward? You know, and, and as far as meeting annually, Mr. Gertz mentioned that, you know, this is a fluid process. It needs your participation, and I highly encourage it. But as far as moving forward with the recommendations, I, I concur with all of them. The, the one piece that gets lost in all of this discussion, tier three is mentioned. And when you say tier three, all of us understand what that means. The general public does not. My only point in bringing that up is the Sustainable Growth and Agricultural Preservation Act of 2012 was an added challenge for the county. So I, I just want to publicly state, moving forward, as quickly as we can implement their recommendations, I'm, I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Are you looking for a motion, Mr. President?
No, sir. This is just a work session today. So we're just here to accept the rec, the report from the committee, and we'll have a future session on the agenda to vote on items. As Commissioner Hutchins has pointed out, there's still some questions we need answers to. I'm going to go through, I do have a couple of questions. So, but today, no, Commissioner Hart, there's no real motion that we need. So, the bank, I'm not opposed to the concept of a bank. I think the question that I've asked several times is you set a price at $4,500, we do an offering, what if nobody sells at $4,500? Does the bank go away or will you all reevaluate your position? How, how's that going to work?
So Commissioner, I think we want to do this on a trial basis. We want to use the money that would be ordinarily put aside for land preservation and we use for the PAR fund as seed money to see how it goes. Let's, let's take a year, let's take the money we have and put out $4,500, and if no one comes forward to buy, we'll be back to you to talk about how we're, you know, we'll revert that money back to the PAR fund if necessary.
And the bank, as my understanding, the bank's first come, first served. So if we purchase 200 TDRs, first developer in the door gets whatever he needs and they're there until they're gone. There's no allocation or just whoever walks in the door.
As part of setting up this program, we can certainly make a limitation on the number that you could sell so that we could share the wealth so that it doesn't all go to one person. So certainly we can take that into consideration.
Just thinking ahead.
Sure.
You know, because there's going to be, somebody comes in and gets them all, the next person's going to say, hey, there wasn't any for me. So just trying to think ahead of how we're going to administer the TDRs that we have.
And we can open an application period and ask how many people want to sell and then, you know, work out a calculation so that they all get to sell an equal amount until the money's used up. We could do that.
Gotcha. And they have.
Mr. President?
Go ahead. Commissioner Hutchins.
Just another point to emphasize, though, on this bank, on Slide 8, the third bullet, the last statement in that bullet, additional general fund contributions. There again, there's a lot of ambiguity here as to the amount of money, the duration, and the longevity of how we balance this. So there, there's a lot of discussion that needs to be looked at with regards to the TDR bank as far as my considerations.
Yeah. And it's a pilot, so they've asked that we use a million dollars to, to get the project going.
Right.
And see how it works.
And then we'll be back, if it's successful, to see how, other ways that we could fund it.
Right.
To move forward.
And, and that's the utilization of the purchase and retirement appropriation from the.
Just from the commissioners for one year for the pilot program. Correct.
Okay. So the next question I had is, they, the committee recommended that we go back and look at the increase that was done in the recordation fee that was supposed to go to land preservation. And that, that funding was never, although in the midnights, it was supposed to be used for preservation, it was never really codified. So, Mr. County Attorney, is there a way that we can codify that money so that we know moving forward, it's a dedicated funding source?
Commissioners, with, with another public hearing, but another public hearing would be required, which may also be required for this pilot program in any event, but certainly we could.
Right. I'm assuming that several of these are going to require other actions. It's not as simple as just saying, oh, yeah, let's do it. But we're just trying to make sure that there's a, that we're working towards a process to get that money codified so that every year we know it's a dedicated source.
Yes.
And I did, I may know this, Rachel, I may have forgotten. What is the annual revenue that comes from that $1.70 per 500? Do you know?
It, it ranges depending on the year, but we can, I can certainly provide you the list of the last several years from finance and budget, but it ranges from anywhere from, I think, $6 million to $8 or $9, something roughly in there. Not million thousand, sorry.
And, and Rachel, and, and I'm sorry, dear, the, for the purpose of the, the public, these are arms-length purchases throughout the year, the recordation tax.
Correct.
Correct. So that's like, for example, this year, the real estate market, from what I have gleaned with humility in St. Leonard, is, is, is pretty robust. So you, you will see, yes.
Right. It would be on the higher end of, of that range that you'd probably see this year than normal, but we can definitely supply you with the average that it's been the last several years.
Just so we have an idea of what that means as we go forward. Understanding that there's always going to be fluctuations based on market conditions, but if you look at a five or 10-year average, that'll give you a pretty good idea where you're going to be on an annual basis. So. And, and I've, I've made no secret, I struggle with the TDR requirements in the town centers when it comes to apartments. I've had that discussion with Mr. Gertz previously. I just can't in my head comprehend why a four-apartment bedroom, four-bedroom apartment only requires one TDR. Just can't get that out of my head. If you would like to talk a little bit about how that discussion went?
So we put, that's how we started this discussion with the TDR committee, was we were proposing a sliding scale. It didn't get through the planning commission or the commissioners. Let's have a conversation, see, and they chose to keep it as is. Both sides felt it was working.
Mary Beth, would you describe who they?
They would be the TDR committee. Yes. Both made up of the ag community and the development community. So they were in full agreement that to keep it as is.
It's just my struggle is a house.
Mr. President, I have a comment.
Yeah. Commissioner Hart?
Um, to, to speak to Commissioner Hans's point, you know, so I think, I, I understand the recommendation to keep it the same, but at the other point, too, the, 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 the bigger picture is, let's make no mistake about it, people are, are, are watching the amount of units that are popping up. We're all hearing it. And so we have got to be very aware of what the future of these areas are going to be. And I think a work session is definitely going to be required because, you know, I've said this so many times, the person looking for a house wants all the options on the table. Once they get here, they don't want to see anything else happen. And to act like that's not the, the, uh, the conversation that's going on out there, I, I think we would be remiss, kind of. So, um, I am very concerned. I, I want to make sure that we stay in pace, what we can handle on the roads, what we can handle in the schools. So I, I'm all about this, this program, I'm going to support this, but I, I want us to be thinking that, um, you know, we're, we're still a peninsula. I believe we're only seven miles wide is what, what the number is. So, um, we're going to be very conscious of how fast this thing grows.
Mr. President? Yes, sir, Commissioner Hutchins.
Yeah, that's, uh, obviously, that's a very touching concern amongst the public. However, if we think back to what was mentioned there, the original concept was that it would transfer and move the density into the town centers. That was the purpose and has been the purpose of the comprehensive plan since its inception. Uh, and this does that to create a workforce-affordable housing level within the town centers, which is what's being done. Obviously, the, the impact is another issue to closely watch. But the concept and its basic premise has existed for some time, and it has not worked that way. Sixty percent of the growth has occurred outside of the town centers, and we need to flip that over, as the county administrator so aptly put several years ago in a discussion.
So the committee felt that moving forward with this package was important. And I certainly think that in another year after we've had the bank, if we go forward with that, and just see where we are with the Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan and the update to the zoning ordinance. I mean, that's something that we could revisit. But I think it's important, at, at the committee's recommendation, to move forward with what they proposed at this time. But it's, it can always be revisited.
But the bank doesn't create a market for TDRs or a demand. The bank is just a convenience for a developer at the end of the day. The developer doesn't go have to out, go out and shop individual TDRs. If we're holding two hundred, and he can just come in and buy fifty from us, he doesn't have to go out and find an individual citizen and then have to negotiate a price, whatever that price may be. So the bank is strictly a convenience for developers. Unless I'm missing something.
We were also hoping to invent, incentivize people selling their TDRs because we have money left over for the past few years from the PAR fund. We can't sell all, you know, we can't use all the money. So we're hoping to find another mechanism to use some of that money.
To my point of forty-five hundred dollars, we left two million dollars on the table last year when we were offering four thousand.
Right.
I don't know what price it's going to take. I mean, that's an individual decision, and we can't make people sell.
What if you set, what if you set a date, whether it's ten years or twenty years, that this program ends at that time? And if you don't sell them or do something with them, then it's over. I mean, are we going to do this for the next forty years? We're the, we're the only county that does them, from my understanding. So we got to have something in there to get these people to, to start doing something with them, is my opinion.
Well, the same argument could be used. You're sitting on a piece of land, you either develop it or you lose that right.
Right.
So is that, I mean, is, that's not a path I don't, I want to go down. People have, people that own TDRs have individual reasons why they sell or why they don't sell. They use TDRs for various reasons. They use TDRs to sell estates with family members. They use TDRs as a, as a res- financial resource if they come in time of need. So I would never support setting a deadline where you either sell them or lose them. And, and if you set that deadline and there's no demand, what are you going to sell them for? Who's going to buy them?
Well, the problem is, is you could get new commissioners next go around. It abolishes the whole program altogether.
Or have something like the Growth Tier.
Right.
You know, the sus- Growth Sustainable Act come out, and they're limited to only subdividing seven, so.
So putting something in place may actually be more protecting them than anything. I don't know.
It's true that commissioners, three votes can change anything any given day. That's a known fact. No matter what we do today, three commissioners can always change that at any given time. So you just live in the day.
Right.
With the information that you have, try to make good decisions.
Commissioners?
Mr. County Administrator?
Commissioners, Mark Willis, County Administrator. One thing I would point out that we haven't discussed that I think is a reality is that these TDRs are being purchased. They're putting, they're being put in a bank. They're being purchased with at least a seed money that is the PAR money. At some point, if it doesn't work, they're already purchased. They're already off the market. And, and they could be, and maybe we need to look at that language from a legal standpoint, but they could be transferred to the, the retired market. We're not going to put them back out there. We're going to retire them if they're not, if this program doesn't work, they're going to be retired. But the other side of that is, if you're talking about lifting the moratorium so that we can create more APDs, because it's, I think, September of 2013 is when it went into effect. If you're going to raise that, and it's already been stated that this committee is going to make sure that, that, you know, we are taking out the most pristine, or we're looking for the most pristine properties in Calvert County. If you don't put these TDRs in the bank, then it's going to be hard. Why would we open it up, just to flood the market again? So I think it, you know, that's something that we still have to look at going forward. I'm, I'm all, I, I certainly support the commissioners in what they're, they're doing and, and moving forward. But I, I think we shouldn't lose the fact that once we purchase them, they're ours, one way or the other. We're going to leave them in the bank for the developers. And if five years go by and nobody uses them, then we're going to retire them. We're not going to put them back out on the market.
And Commissioner Hutchins had mentioned workforce housing. We had a little discussion of that in my staff meeting. And somewhere in there, there's a recommendation that we exempt low-income and workforce housing from a requirement for TDRs. And if you look at the definition of workforce housing, just about everything in Prince Frederick almost meets that criteria. So nothing in the town center could end up even requiring one TDR.
Well, though, I think the problem with that is, because when you start adding more things on them, it, there's no such thing as affordable. You know, you've already added, you got to have sprinkler systems and all these different things. And there, there's no such thing as of now to make something affordable. So if you add more to it, I think that's what the reasoning is behind it.
And that regulation is in effect today.
And it's the income, and it's the income that's the trigger.
Yes.
Correct. It's the medium average income that triggers.
Right.
What levels.
That's correct.
So, so, Mr. President, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
So if I could speak to that, so my, my problem with that is, though, is so I, and you heard me talk about this back to the museum piece, is I don't want to penalize somebody and say, okay, you need to pay for somebody else. I, I can appreciate workforce housing, but if the person, the couple that goes out and buys a house has to pay for a TDR, and we look at the other guy and say, well, okay, well, he doesn't, because it is, he, he doesn't make the same amount of money. Well, you just kind of shift in the responsibility on, somebody has to pay for it eventually. You know, so I, I want to make sure when we proceed that, um, the playing field's fair. And, and I'm not against workforce housing and things that nature, but I don't, you know, I don't want to put the bill on somebody else.
Well, that, that's not putting the bill on somebody else necessarily, solely on that basis. And, and the workforce housing does require TDRs. It is the, um, the senior, a more senior level of assisted living that's exempted on that. But there is a cost, obviously, to, to the operation, and there's a cost to deal with this, uh, development outside of, of the town centers, in the terms of water, sewer, those kinds of things. So there's a balance in there that, that you have to strike. But my point was that it has been established in the comprehensive plan and concepts since their inception that the growth be focused on the town center by the preponderance of the growth that is. So, but, and then we have a responsibility, too, if we're going to try to attract young people to stay in Calvert County and be able to develop their families and their employment here, which adds to the base of, yes, it does cost. There's a certain cost to just about anything. You can play that either way.
And also, too, I don't want to encourage, like, if there's a builder saying, well, I'm only going to build a certain type of thing because my cost is going to be lower. We all know business. You know, business is a profit game. So I haven't seen too many people that are in the, uh, uh, what's the right, I don't know the right word I'm looking for, but-
Charity.
The generosity piece, you know, it's, 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 I mean, it's, it's a money game, right? So I, I don't want to, I don't want to put too much incentive, say, that we don't get a variety of products, so to speak.
Well, and that's, that's a concept, too, that I've spoken about a couple of times, is that we should not build enclaves for the poor. It should be an integrated type of economic development in housing and housing opportunities that don't just isolate a particular group.
So, and you talk about lifting the moratorium on the creation of APDs using a priority system. I fully support that. Because there are properties out here that do need to be preserved, and today, we don't have every tool that we need to do that. So I'm very happy to see that the group's going to work towards that goal of getting some more APDs. And, and the discuss, what was the discussion in the committee about? You know, we've heard the supply and demand, and that there's too many, some have said there's too many TDRs, there's not enough development potential left in the county to use up the TDRs that are already on the book. Did the committee talk about that in their discussions? And how?
Yes, that was one of the, the, one of the things that they started with, and kind of just said, that's why, if, why they wanted to set the price and keep it stable, because in, in years past, for, even for setting the price in the PAR program, the Ag Board and the BOCC has leaned heavily on, what has the average sale price been set by the free market? Well, because of the recession and because of the Sustainable Growth Act, that really affected the, the demand for development over the last couple of years. And we're starting to see that change and to see that reverse. So, you know, hopefully, we're hoping in the next five to ten years, that demand is going to come back. But in, in that timeframe, when we needed it, because, you know, we've got these TDRs that we're sitting on, they weren't moving like they were when the demand was really high in Calvert for, in between the eighties, nineties, and early two thousands. So, yes, they thought that, that's the issue there with, you know, and that's why farmers aren't selling their TDRs, because if left up to the free market, it wasn't really, their TDRs weren't going for what they really are valued at. And when looking at other programs around the state, when they're setting their, their values for, for easements, they do it on, on land value per acre. And we had one just go here recently in Calvert where the, the price per acre was just over a five thousand, and that was for a fully wooded lot. So when, when you do that comparison, just what, what the prices were coming out for TDRs when leaning on the free market, it just wasn't accurate. And, and that's why setting this price for, for the bank and keeping it stable, they thought that that would help level that, that playing field.
I think the problem is, is when they had reached that peak at nine thousand, everybody's thinking it's going to go back to that. It never has, so, you know, it's-
I, I think, given the, the recent, especially since the Sustainable Growth Act of 2012, we're not, we're never going to see it go back there, I don't think.
So we-
Mr. President?
Commissioner Hutchins.
Along that same line, what do you, what are the projections for the population over the next twenty years? Because that's going to be a factor, too, that the growth rates are only going to be but so much. As, as been pointed out, Calvert County only has so much area there outside of the town centers that is still developable.
I think MTP's projections over the next several years is, is relatively minor compared to what we've seen in the past. It was like one to three percent growth rate annually.
So consequently, that's going to impact the, the draw off of the pack?
I would assume it would have some impact, yes.
Thank you.
So the growth rate's projected about a thousand people a year?
I would have to look into the exact numbers.
That would be one or two percent.
Yeah.
So that's, uh, five hundred units? If you figure two people per unit, using that as a number?
Yeah, I guess depending on the type of housing projects that we get over the next couple of years.
I think we get more than one to two people in a house, you got kids.
Yeah, I don't know what the average is. I was just kind of throwing it out there, see what they gave me back.
Yeah, it's usually like two and a half for the census, something, somewhere around there.
So it's a little less than five hundred units.
Right, but that doesn't necessarily, I mean, they could be moving into existing stock. People could be moving out.
Right, it's not necessarily new.
No.
The two and a half, I thought that was for like townhouses. Is it different for homes?
I think it's the general, just the census. It's two and a half, around two and a half people per home is what they established is the average people.
Right.
It, it was two point eight during the comprehensive plan update, but with the latest census, I think they've kind of, the, the numbers have been coming down.
Right. Although with COVID, they may be going back up.
Hey. So, uh, we're going to expand the rural areas to all the priority preservation areas? So, um, when was the last property we actually got into rural legacy?
We actually just completed one this past year. It was, it's down in Lesby, I believe. Governors run, I think it's like eighty acres that was just preserved. But, so, I'll add to that. Part of the request from the committee wanting back to the previous level of funding is for these state programs, it, it's run as a grant program, and to be able, to be at the top of their list to receive their grants, they look for county match. So if you provide county matching funds, you're more likely to get a grant. So for us to have that, that extra funding towards land preservation to be used for other things past PAR and LAAR, it would really help, help us to be able to utilize the state land preservation programs by having that match. So we haven't been very active in this, either one, the MAF program or the Rural Legacy Program in the last several years. And it's because we don't, we don't have that, that match. But I think that would be hel- helpful to us, to make us look better at the state level.
Because we signed an agreement with RCD over a year ago. Have they made any progress on getting any properties in?
Commissioners, that's the property that we're talking about right now. So in conjunction with them, I believe ACLT, which was looking at that property, they kind of partnered in and went with that, and it was that eighty-acre, roughly, property that we put in rural legacy.
Gotcha. And what, could you briefly tell me, allow the density to be increased in Tier Three?
That's, that's currently in place that we allow the use of TDRs to increase your density in Tier Three. Tier Three is where major subdivisions can take place. So for single-family dwellings, that, that's going to be your, your biggest bulk use of TDRs.
So can you give me an example of acreage? You reduce lots from five acres to four acres, or how's that work?
It's the number of lots based on the zoning. So if you're in the RCD, and I'm going to quote this wrong, I don't know right offhand what the density in the RCD is. Let's say it's one per ten. So potentially, you could buy TDRs to create a one-per-five density. And that, this is purely hypothetical, because I don't know the subdivision regulations as well as I should.
Right.
Um, so it's just being able to get more lots by, through the buying of TDRs, which is what, how the program's been run.
And that's an equal trade-off, right? You still, you need five TDRs for every house that's built in Tier Three?
That's correct.
Right.
Above conventional density.
Right.
Right. So I don't have any other questions? Anybody else have questions or comments? Still struggling with the TDR requirements in the town centers? But that'll be my struggle. So if there's no other questions, we appreciate the efforts of the committee and all your time, and you're not done. And so we'll gather some more information based on the discussion today And so we'll gather some more information based on the discussion today and schedule another session at a later time. But thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next item under work session number two, budget finance. Tim Hayden, are you there?
I am, Commissioner. Good morning. The subject for today's second work session is the fiscal year 2022 Board of Education allocation. Background, the Department of Finance and Budget is preparing the staff recommended budget for fiscal year 2022. And as of today, the $325 million budget has a $1 million deficit. Staff will work with the Board of County Commissioners and expect to resolve that difference in time for the Board of County Commissioners budget. The Board of Education's, BOE, requests for a $1 increase to their budget for fiscal year 22 would be considered a gift to the county government in a normal year. This is not a normal year. Discussion, we're still in the early stages of the 2022 budget process. The public hearing for the staff recommended budget is tentatively scheduled for March 23rd, 2021. And that's at seven o'clock. I assume it'll be virtual. I'll share that that budget is now available on the county's website. So I'd encourage all stakeholders or anybody interested to go take a look at it. So the fiscal impact. The issue that concerns the Department of Finance and Budget is the Board of Education's use of fund balance to increase their total budget from the prior year. This money is not allocated to one-time items and will need to be replaced with other funding in future years. Conclusion, the Department of Finance and Budget would like to share the attached presentation and discuss the options with the Board of Education's manager. We're, we're talking about two budgets today, which will, which will make it a little more confusing than I wish. But remember that we're, we're talking about the county government's budget. And we're also talking about the, the Board of Education's or the schools or the superintendent's budget. We could use all of those terms to mean the same thing. The superintendent's budget came out recently and, and that's where our focus would be. So, and I believe Dr. Curry is here. And I am, I am happy to continue and go through my presentation, but I wanted to give Dr. Curry the option. If he wanted to start, he's welcome to, or if not, I am ready to continue.
Tim, did they check his temperature at the door? Because I've never known him to only ask for a dollar.
The, so we'll, we'll get into why very soon.
So, Dr. Curry? Oh, Tim, Dr. Curry said you could continue on.
Okay, here we go. So I, I can't see what you're seeing, but I'm assuming we are on the purpose slide, slide two. And so the purpose of the day is to determine funding plans for the Board of Education. There we go. And to discuss the Board of Education Superintendent's 22 budget. County funding to the Board of Education is the county's largest tax-supported expense. For anyone listening that doesn't know, the Board of Education are elected officials that act on behalf of the Calvert County Public Schools. School boards are governed by state law and established the policies by which local schools are governed. Next slide. This slide is, I'm, I'm using it only to show recent history of funding. And if you focus on the, the bottom line there, my comment that I would hope that wouldn't be perceived negatively that the dollar is a gift to the county. These, for instance, in 2019, the increase was 5,100,000. And that, those are, as you see, they continue to the 4 millions. That, that's more the norm. So that's where the $1 gift comment came from.
Tim, Tim?
Yes.
Please, sir, um, could you elaborate to the citizens that we had a funding formula in place?
Yes, sir.
Please.
And as a matter of fact, this document is how the funding formula works. And, and I would also share that the funding formula was very generous and, and creates those kind of three and four percent increases. And I can walk you through. So if we could, let's skip the first year because it was a one-time adjustment, that $2 million that was added. But if we could go to the 2020 column up top, you can see that for 2020, the enrollment of students was 15,473.5. That was a 40.5 increase from the prior year. School funding for the state of Maryland starts with last year's funding. So our funding formula followed the law and we started with the 126,367,000 that shows is the prior year appropriation. Maintenance of effort says that whatever per student you paid last year, you have to pay per student next year. In 2020, the enrollment was up by 40 and a half students. That creates the $331,000 increase. Where, so that's state law. So state law would have told us that maintenance of effort was 126,698, In addition to maintenance of effort though, what the funding formula does for the schools is it adds a consumer price index factor that, that is, that became the $2,597,324. Last year, that factor was calculated at 2.05%. So the, the 2,500,000 is a 2.05% increase. And then the final factor of the funding formula would be plus an adjustment factor of 1% for new initiatives and to help fund the schools. And that's the, the $1,292,000 on the bottom to get us to our fiscal year 20 funding of 130,589,034. Next slide, please. Happy to take any funding format questions. You'll hear, you'll hear later that, well, here we go, for now. So enrollment, that is why this year's different. Calvert County school enrollment went down by 681 students. Note that Maryland, the state as a whole, school enrollment went down by, the recent number I've seen is 19,000. I, I've heard higher. But let's say, you know, close to 20,000 students have come out of the system during this current school year. Certainly because of COVID. After years, this chart will show you that after years of declining enrollment in our Calvert County Public Schools, September 2018, enrollment increased as it did in September 2019. You won't see any changes in this line chart that, that are anywhere close to 681 students. In response to the statewide issue during February, the state made some changes to the law regarding school funding. To add to the confusion, there are more changes proposed. But I'm going to try to at least tell you what I know as we go through. So next slide. So this is how you used to calculate maintenance of effort funding. Enrollment is important because it determines the amount that the county is legally required to fund the Board of Education. And that legal requirement is referred to as maintenance of effort or MOE. MOE requires the funding per student to carry forward in the future years. So this was the law until the state legislature overrode the governor's veto, veto, and the Kerwin bill became law. And that happened in mid-February. And, and the Kerwin bill currently, the county attorney pointed out earlier that they've already made 65 amendments to the, the Kerwin bill. I think. But as of right now, the Kerwin bill says to use the greater of September 20 or the three-year average. And so the calculation is the same. But now the enrollment number that this schedule reports right in the middle is the 14,896 and a quarter students or full-time equivalents. Now that number because of that average is 15,316. And the, the exact number is not important right now. But I would tell you instead of a 5.9 million dollar decrease, today it would be a 2.3 million dollar increase per maintenance of effort funding. So next slide, please. So I, I mentioned the dollar earlier. The county's working on its budget for the year. The staff recommended budget includes the dollar. This is proposed by staff because the state is providing additional funding to the schools as long as the county provides additional funding and the $1 qualifies us. Because of the statewide declining enrollment, the formulaic funding from the state to the schools would be lower. Calvert County schools are allocated $5.3 million in additional state funding as a result of hold harmless grants. So, so the state uses MOE in a different way, but they use student count as we do. Their contributions would be down. In, in response to that, they're using hold harmless grants to keep a, a level funding or, or better in some cases. In our case, it's 5.3 million additional dollars. We are required to increase our funding by that dollar to get to 5.3 million. Next slide, please. So this slide was included because of the significant dollars involved and the uncertainty around the ability of the state to act quickly to the issues. But like I just told you, the state has already taken action to change the fiscal year 22 laws. And this slide is, is in reference to fiscal year 23. After seeing the state's change to the 22 laws, I feel more confident that something will happen. I, I would tell you that because of the Kerwin changes that I mentioned earlier, this $6 million increase is off the table. And again, we're back in the 2.3 range. You, you can see the old slides, it was about 6 million down and about 6 million up. Now the number's closer to 2.3. So, so for these two slides, that would be the takeaway. And, and we'll be watching the Kerwin bill closely. The Maryland Association of Counties has a school funding session tomorrow that I will be taking, taking notes from. Next slide, please. The use of fund balance. So this, this brings us back to our, the, maybe the primary purpose of this, other than share information with the stakeholders. This schedule attempts to explain the use of fund balance and the, the concern. Column one is the fiscal year 21 adopted budget. You can see the total of 226 million. Fiscal year 22 is the recently, recently released superintendent's budget. And again, you can see the total at 232,991. Sticking with that total line, that would be an increase of 6,400,000 to the Board of Education's budget. The revenue sources for the Board of Education are state funding, a small portion of federal funding, the local use of fund balance. The primary funding source is the county and then, and then transfers. The gray area is a, an estimate, a projection of, of how this could work out. And, and the point is that when you use fund balance for recurring expenses, funds need to be available in future years to pay for those recurring expenses. The, the recommendation around use of fund balance is for one-time items or, or emergencies. In the gray area, fiscal year 23, we use the county's forecast to say how, you know, what is, what is a relatively aggressive funding to the Board of Education in 23? And at 139 million, you can see it's a big round number. It's not intended to be exact. For the other items in here, we use 2%. So, so all the other items increased at 2%. The, the local use of fund balance line item for fiscal year 23, the 3 million, that's a guess at, at how much might be available to the board. The point of the gray area is to provide a, a, a projection of how fiscal year 23 could look and to highlight that even with a, a pretty optimistic funding level by the county, it would only be an increase of 1.6 million. It would be very difficult to balance that budget and the 22 use of fund balance is creating that issue. And, and I'm going to stop there and I hope, I hope maybe for Dr. Curry's comments, he could enlighten me as well as the board. So next slide, please. Commissioner leans back to the funding formula. The board has challenged me with providing a funding formula for consideration. This slide reports some of the great reasons that we have had such, such success in the past. You, you've heard some of the challenges we're up against right now. And a multi-year funding agreement would be very difficult. And I, I would say the challenges are all the uncertainty that are, are going on at the state level right now. And how the, how the Kerwin bill is such a significant piece of legislation as it relates to the state funding schools and even how the requirements around the county funding schools. It, it makes it very difficult to recommend any sort of multi-year plan. But again, it's, it is on the list and I am considering different ways to do it.
So, Tim, Tim?
Yes.
So basically what we all sort of understand and what you're trying to say is because of Kerwin, funding formula is not going to be as important moving forward because they've got everything covered in that. And if we follow Kerwin, there's, you know, what's the point of a formula? Is that, that, am I close to being correct?
I would say that Kerwin is very generous to the schools. I, I think the, the the estimate that I saw between 2020 and 2030, and this is statewide, there'll be a 4 billion increase to the schools and maybe 1.2 billion of that is coming from the counties. Now, so Calvert County schools historically are very well-funded by the county. And our projected expense in 2030 is zero as long as our numbers look similar to how they have. Whereas the, the big counties, I think, you know, Prince George's, Montgomery and maybe Baltimore, they, their funding had to increase really significantly to be in compliance with Kerwin. So Commissioner, the answer is I'm not really sure.
And if I, if I might add, the much of the legislation in the future for Kerwin, we have been told additional dollars from the state, many of them will be contingent upon local share, matching, some sort of match. What, what Tim's referring to is compared to other counties, our match will be proportionately a lot less because there's already good support for, for the schools and the typical funding from Calvert County Government. So whatever, there's still, there will be a match. So I would anticipate a formula that looks somewhat like the old and that includes a provision that you would provide whatever match would be required for us to qualify. for state Kerwin dollar.
I heard it was only going to be a dollar.
Could be.
Yeah.
Mr. President.
Could be. But based on student population, that's, he's actually getting more money than he would under student population calculations by about two point eight million dollars. So it's not a gift. I mean, if we were to hold them to M O E for student population, which the state's not going to let us do.
Right, right.
Right, and keep in mind that our formula that we've been working on the last four years held harmless loss of enrollment. So it it took into account that if we would have a loss of enrollment, we would get the same amount as the previous year. If we had an increase in enrollment, then we got the M O E increase.
But when that agreement was signed, nobody anticipated a drop of seven hundred students in one year.
That's correct.
Right. So there's, there are no savings in a student reduction of that magnitude for the system?
Uh, there certainly there is if you can plan for it. Um, with the circumstances is we started this school year, staffed this school year based upon enrollment we had the year before, as well as the enrollment as students enrolled throughout the year. Uh, before the before the fall of twenty-twenty, we're staffed for a certain number of kids. And when you consider the fact that our our September thirty count was down only six eighty, yet we know we had a hundred, no, we had a thousand more homeschoolers than ever before. And we know that we had a significant number likely who left us to enroll in private school if they could get a place in a private school. So in reality, if we hadn't had a pandemic, we could have been looking at an increase of three, four hundred kids this year. And we would have had to up our staff as the school year started with class sizes getting too large and things like that. So in in essence, we are staffed for that total number from the year before, and it hasn't hurt us, given online instruction and what we've been doing to have smaller class sizes. And we're going to keep, we want to keep them for next fall, uh, because we consider it's a it's a one-time phenomenon. And to uh put a number in, Tim was trying to speculate what he was hearing about the state with loss of enrollment. The number I understand of loss of enrollment total statewide public schools was thirty-three thousand students. That's why the state has gone ahead and addressed from their funding point of view, the hold harmless on the low on the lost enrollment, not penalizing any school district. And they are proposing for the recalculation of M O E to pretty much skip this year and do a three-year average of of uh of eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, or something like that, to decide what the M O E would be in twenty-three. So they're they're working on that language because as when we spoke last, uh, it is clear that every school district lost enrollment, that every school district hopes to get that enrollment back with the return to school in twenty-one, and that um that is the reason why we're digging into the savings account to use fund balance to to get us there. Let me also point out that in the spring of fifteen, that was my first budget as a superintendent. And Calvert County Commission, we didn't have a formula then. The commission, if I recall right, decided to fund us at M O E that year. And the governor's new budget made a few changes that we lost several million dollars in state money. And after I presented the state, the superintendent's budget, it was clear that I had to make a budget that was four million dollars left, less. And by the final budget that was presented to the commissioners, we had made the decisions that we needed to make, and we reduced about sixty-five, seventy staff in order to make that budget balanced. So in the end, what are we going to do for building a budget in twenty-twenty-three? We certainly can't always count on fund balance. We hope our enrollment will uh return in a robust way. We're doing everything we can during the remainder of this school year to put away some dollars so it's not just a use of present fund balance, but we can grow some fund balance to reduce that impact and um and save what that looks like. In fact, the budget we will present uh to uh with the staff in a couple of weeks will be for um a use of seven point one million in fund balance rather than seven point five. So we're continuing to try to squeeze that a little bit.
So one of the challenges you face now that you didn't when you first became, when you came here, is that when you reduce those positions now, there's such a shortage of teachers and positions that you're always looking for. So it's not so easy just to get rid of somebody now because you you won't get them back.
That's that's the truth.
Yeah.
We could say, okay, our present enrollment is this.
Right.
Let's let's shave back the number of staff we have to to fit the present enrollment.
Right.
But we certainly hope that if everything falls into place, vaccines roll out to the way they're to the extent they're supposed to be, the variants on COVID aren't going to probably cause us a problem, um, and that we'll be able to uh tell everybody, I I get asked this every day, when are you going to announce it's all going to be back to normal? Well, I don't know whether we have a normal, but maybe we can be back to a new normal. Uh, and uh it's we're still six months out, so it's a bit premature to just make that. But it certainly is a goal that we would be back to regular school. Now, also, there's another expense that's hanging out there that all school districts are talking about. We know there's still a lot of interest in families for to to be one hundred percent virtual. It may be a new division. It may be a new branch of every public school to be expected to offer virtual instruction as well as in-person instruction. So we're working through what that might look like as well. Maybe not, but I think it's something that uh that um we might have to consider, and we don't know to what extent, what kind of cost that has.
But that that already exists, correct? Because I talked to a young lady over two years ago, I guess, and she was already doing online high school.
We have, we have previously offered some of our electives in online courses. Yes, we have several, we've had several just specific courses developed for online instruction. Many students will take them on their uh and their outside of their regular school day in order to gain credits if they don't want to take up space in their regular schedule for.
This this young lady wasn't going to a school building at all. She was doing it all online.
Right.
Was that through you or that through another?
That was a, if it's the courses I'm thinking of, there's a handful of high school courses uh that offered through us, yes.
So you just have to increase capacity for that.
Right.
Program for those that don't want to come back.
Exactly. Suppose you have, if we just ask who's interested, and we, but we also tell them, you got to stick with it for a year and not change your mind every couple of weeks. Suppose we have enough to make one second grade class. Doesn't have to be affiliated with any school. We'd have one teacher who teaches second grade, the second grade class online that just works for Calvert County Schools. And it could come from a faculty that is already maybe a little bit overstaffed in second grade teachers. You have to deal with it.
The seven million in fund balance that you're going to use, what is that going to cover? What shortfall is that covering?
Well, when as you, as in our standard presentation on the budget, eighty-three cents of every dollar is salary and benefits. So you really, if you really want to save money, reduce your costs, you don't do it by buying less paper or pencils or anything like that. It's staffing.
So it's seven million dollars of salary increase?
Well, it would be, uh, no, well, no, our salary increases don't total seven million dollars, but to maintain our present staff with the salary increases that are due, uh, that's part of the new cost for the new year. That and we are, you know, we, this this year was our first year to be um um future-ready with having made plans and to have a laptop computer in the hands of every third through twelfth grader. As it turned out, we ended up doing that for K through two as well. That 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 won't be a future expense because that's really not in our plans for the future for the littlest ones to be have have to be able to use laptops to go to school. But they have tablets. And so we uh we rolled that out. That was that was new this year as we have increased, I mean, when you think about that, three through twelve, every kid has a laptop, that's um that's twelve, thirteen thousand laptop for students. And that increases your total number, your your I T staff and your support staff to keep things going as well.
And that's not a normal thing in most school systems.
It put us in a, we were in a great position to be able to, there are a lot who put in, were were in the summer making orders for thousands of computers to try to get ready for the fall, and we were already there.
Yeah, St. Mary's County needed, I thought I was told, fifteen thousand iPads, and we needed zero. Yep, we're close. So we were way ahead of the curve. But back to the seven million, if it had been a normal year, we weren't going to give you a seven million dollar increase next year. How are you going to cover that shortfall in a normal process?
Well, if it had been a normal year, uh, as far as enrollment, and we had done, um, we we had even in the absence of a formula, still re uh maybe repurposed the same formula we've had the last four years, it would have, the C P I and the one percent, it would have been pretty close.
Because I thought since I've been with increases, we're like five million or something like that.
Three and a half percent. One time, two million dollar.
That was for security.
Yeah, for the.
Upgrades, so that doesn't count.
But but basically, the what led to us getting more revenue has been the C P I calculation and the one percent. And and that would just about cover it. And if it doesn't, then we go and make serious decisions about staffing.
Right.
So, Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner Hutchins.
Um, back to the purpose slide there, uh, being able to determine uh for funding plans. With Kerwin, I don't know what the uh funding sources have been identified. I could say there, there was no full funding uh identified as far as by source, so it was a big question mark there. This whole thing has created a an anomaly of many sorts, and it'd be hard to see what comes out of Kerwin until we get to sign it die and finally get a final figure of that. Um, that said, I think that the twenty-two issue is what's before us as to what to do with that, and and I don't think we're in a position to do a funding formula for twenty-two. I think we're in a better position to do a bridge for twenty-two and then focus on twenty-three for the formula when we've got better numbers and a better idea of what the long term may look like after the general assembly session.
And I would agree with that. We we uh we've talked with staff, Ms. Hutchinson and I, and I, and we kind of left it that we'll we'll make the first proposal, and we'll we'll draft one up. And we kicked around saying something about twenty-two, and I said, let's just leave twenty-two out. That's an anomaly. What we're asking for is not necessarily formula-based, except for the fact that when I saw the initial legislation that said counties would be required to fund level to the previous year uh or more than the previous year, that's why, that's where you're lucky in that I just went for one dollar instead of one million to just get more than the previous year. But I thought that was that was enough, that was reasonable to ask for.
Commissioner Hart, do you have anything?
No, sir, I'm just, I'm just listening. Um, uh, all all good points, no, sir, I'm just just following along.
Okay. Tim, we cut you off from one slide, I think. I started to ask some questions, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. The purpose of this is to share information, and I think we have the right group to do it. There's only one more slide. It it details a little bit uh more about uh some of the funding formula work that was done. Uh, available funding comes up. I'll remind you that in fiscal year twenty-four, our projections show uh revenues as decreasing. Uh, so I, any funding formula really should consider that. Period's flexible, but I I think we're coming up on election year. Uh, Kerwin contingency, we, I wouldn't say we've beaten to death because I I'm sure there's a reams and reams of paper, but uh uh everybody should understand the point of that. And then uh the Board of Education has been happy with the formula, and that that's important. Uh, our schools are great. And uh uh but it's a lot of money. And that was uh, that's my last slide.
So we've been asking questions. I'm not sure if there's any other questions left, but I think as the point was made earlier, you know, funding formula, we're just going to have to delay that process until we see how Kerwin all shakes out in the legislature, you know. And as you mentioned, our concern for the hold harmless has been how it impacts M O E as we move forward. We've been assured.
Nobody wants, nobody wants to artificially.
Yes.
Inflate M O E for twenty-three.
So we're we're being told that's going to get fixed. So uh, you know, the state has pretty much tied us what we're going to do for twenty-two. So and we'll just have to see how everything shakes out next year when hopefully we get back.
Let me just say once again, we can, we appreciate the support, we appreciate the relationship we've had with commissioners. The formula has uh prevented a lot of debate and dispute. It's been nice to have. It has allowed for a little bit of inflationary growth, and certainly it allows for any enrollment growth, and we hope we can get back to enrollment growth next year.
Yep, we're all looking forward to that. So if I don't hear any other questions or discussion points, thank you, Dr. Curry, for coming in. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
For your presentation.
Thank you, gracious. Thank you.
So the next item I have on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any today?
There are no speakers.
Thank you, then we have no public comment today. The next item on the agenda is commissioner reports. Commissioner Hutchins, would you like to start?
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just to reiterate on Women's Month and the contribution of women to our society and every aspect of it and our government, uh, most visibly by the recent presidential election that we have a vice president, obviously that's a woman. So it's uh, it's come a long ways, to put it shortly. Second thing is, there's been a lot of confusion and discussion over H B six fifty-five. Uh, that was by Delegate Crosby of St. Mary's County. And to try to add some clarification to what it's really about, and it, what it's really comes down to is one person, one vote. I had the privilege to have a seatmate and a mentor, Delegate Linton, who actually attended as a delegate to the nineteen sixty-six, sixty-seven Constitutional Convention. That was a result of an order by the Supreme Court ordering the two houses in Maryland Legislature to reconduct a review of reapportion. And while this is not necessarily a reapportion issue, uh, the justice that brought that forward focused on one man, one vote, quote, that was the terminology then. And what Delegate Crosby has done focuses on that. In particular, our our issue here is at Calvert County. We have a perfect setup for that as an example, in that we have three districts and two delegates at large. So no matter what district you're in, you're able to vote on the majority of the representatives in the Board of County Commissioners. The purpose and point of one person, one vote is not to have it diluted by votes from some other district. In this case, myself voting, sitting in District Two, uh, would be voted on solely by District Two commit uh citizens, uh, who could also then vote for the two county commissioners at large. So the principle behind it, as I wrote to you all in my first memo, uh, is absolutely correct, one person, one vote. The process has gotten a little convoluted, and it involves other other commit uh counties that don't have necessarily the setup we have, maybe some, one of them does, I don't know. But we have the perfect setup to execute on what's in that bill. So if that bill, if that bill passes, and all probability, I would think it probably will, uh, then it should not be any big deal. It's not an issue of any one particular group or entity, uh, whether it be political or by ethnic or origin of of gender, but it's applicable solely in the one person, one vote. It doesn't dilute and hurt any particular group, uh, because it would be applied that way, because any group that's dispersed within the three districts can vote for their district representative as well as two at-large representatives. So they're voting for the majority of the Board of County Commissioners. So I I hope that adds some clarity to it. That's the root of it. I was privileged to sit for that length of time in the House with a a person that had been there. And he- And he imparted a great deal of knowledge, uh, about this issue. And I think, uh, he was right and in this case, I think Delegate Crosby was right. Uh, even after I go back and relook at the issue of using, um, a, a referendum as a means, um, probably the probability would not have achieved his goal had that been a referendum. Because in the original Constitutional Convention, it was certainly held that everything in that convention, which was embraced by the delegates, would probably pass when in actual reality it did not. Uh, it was defeated by the rural areas that existed then. So I hope that gives some clarity to people as to what this is all about. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Um, I wanted to, um, thank Delegate Fisher and Republican Central Committee. They had, um, myself and Commissioner Weems up and there was an opportunity, you know, we, we, part of this job was always an opportunity to talk to people firsthand. I, I really am not a fan of the video stuff and, um, it was a chance for, I think, them to see us as people instead on the screen and can, can, um, express their concerns about the, with the school system and, and things in general. So I want to thank you for that. And, um, to, to Commissioner Hutchins' point, you know, the, the, this bill doesn't scare me, so to speak. I don't know that it has huge repercussions on Calvert County as a whole, but, but here's the thing I didn't like this week with watching some of the stuff at Annapolis is unfortunately in the rural counties, we become insignificant too many times that they believe what's right for them, we just deal with it. And I have a big issue with that. I watched a few things that came out of Montgomery County that would have sweeping effects on the whole state. And, you know, if you want to do something in your backyard, fine, but I think Calvert County should control the direction that it goes. And I understand sometimes there's bigger issues of things that, that maybe need to have, need to sweep across the state. But we're getting to a point where every little issue and every little, and I'm not talking about this bill in particular, Commissioner Hutchins, not that, I'm just talking in general. But anything that, that, that Montgomery County or, or the, or the bigger parts of the county see as a focus point, also we have to deal with it. And it may not apply to us. And I think we saw that a lot like with, like rain tax. You know, rain tax, they did that cutoff, but you, but you know, as absurd as it sounded to us, and it is absurd, you know, the problem is, is when you start something like probably the first time somebody said rain tax, they laughed at them. By the fourth or fifth time you heard it, somebody's going, yeah, when, when we go put this rain tax in, it just, you know? And that's the problem that I'm having is that, okay, something that's a, a, an issue to them, fine, stop including the rest of the state. And that's the only thing that these things bother me with, like say this, this one here, you know, I, I, I don't know that it's going to change how we vote in Calvert County, but those are the only things that concern me. So that's, that's it.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Hart. Commissioner McConkey?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention to congratulate Danielle Conroe for getting, uh, Calvert County Engineer of the Year Award. Um, we're grateful, uh, to her for outstanding work and commitment to serving the citizens of Calvert County and just wanted to send my condolences to the Horseman family. I saw that they, um, lost a, a large barn on their farm.
Yes, yes.
Over the last couple of days and then I guess one of the grandkids was rebuilding a, uh, an older F-150 truck and lost everything in the fire. So just wanted to send that out to them.
Thank you. Mr. Weems?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I just want to extend condolences to the friends and family of the Thompson family of Dow, as well as the Woodward family of St. Leonard. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. So it, just to add on to Commissioner McConkey, uh, J.R. Cosgrove, who works for us in, uh, Department of Public Works, was his farm there on Perrin Road, they lost a very large barn, a lot of equipment. Um, it was a very tragic event. And, uh, this Sunday at, uh, Mrs. Moose's on 231, they're having a little fundraiser and they do have a GoFundMe account set up on Facebook for Wesley, who is J.R.'s son, who as Commissioner McConkey mentioned, was restoring an old pickup truck headed there in a barn. And Wesley's a very good young man, had already purchased some farm equipment, loves to farm and, uh, all that got lost in the fire. Uh, fires are devastating things. Kathy said, uh, she was in the house, saw smoke and by the time she called 911 and got out of the house, the barn was gone. And it was a very large barn. So it happens quick.
Luckily it didn't get that other barn right beside it.
The Fire Department showed up and, uh, great volunteers that we have did save the other farm buildings, but, uh, unfortunately could not save the contents of that building. But no livestock was lost and nobody was injured, so at the end, that's what's most important. Also want to thank, uh, Rob Reed today. Mr. Reed was not replaced on the planning commission. Mr. Reed has spent 25 years or more on the planning commission, so we want to take this opportunity to thank him for his service to Calvert County. And, um, Danielle Conroe, I think we mentioned that last week, I wasn't sure. That's why I hadn't mentioned it before, but we are fortunate to have such good employees that get recognized statewide for the work that they do. So, uh, appreciate all the work that Danielle does for us too. So, uh, that concludes my remarks. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. President, I move that we go into executive session. It's closed to the public pursuant to general provisions, Article 3-305 of the Annotated Code of Maryland, Number One of Personnel Matter, 3-305B1I. The Board will discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of an appoint, of an appointee, employee, or official over whom it has jurisdiction. And Number Two of Personnel Matter, 3-305B1I, the Board will discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of an appointee, employee, or official over whom it has jurisdiction. Second.
Have a motion in a second to go into executive session. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all and have a great day.